Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's regularly-scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno? Here. Tara Burkhart?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Greg Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simoneon?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We have a full house tonight, folks. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite Mr. DeGroot. Please lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David.
Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight, folks?
Item four. Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk can be considered routine by this body and can be considered with one motion.
Don't move.
Motion by Singer, seconded by Sino. Any questions or comments? Roll call is in order, Mr. Clerk. Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoneon?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Item five passes unanimously. We jump down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate and in your packet for consideration.
Bills for payment total $2,940,094.21.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's pack on the Geneva website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cummings. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoneon?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Item 10 passes unanimously. Our committee of the whole, items of business, item 11A is to recommend approval of resolution number 2016-22 authorizing acceptance of proposal to bind coverage for commercial liability, excess workers' compensation, property, boiler and machinery, and excess liability insurance effective April 30, 2016. Seconded by Cummings, seconded by Marx. Any questions or comments regarding item 11A? Alderman Simoneon?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First off, I think that we need a different process here because it seems like to me we're in a cycle that we can't get out of unless we change the cycle. What I mean by that is we have almost a half a million dollar budget item here that for the last eight years has gone unchecked with any competition, but we have a contract that is automatically renews every year, but yet you need 120 days advance notice in order to change the contract. So I think that there should be something in place that allows us the opportunity at 150 days or 180 days prior to that 120-day mark for us to revisit this on a regular basis to decide whether we want to put it out for bid. But I'm not going to vote for this because I feel uncomfortable for eight years. We've had one broker and we've not checked these numbers other than him saying, "Oh, yeah, it's very competitive." So I think the process needs to be changed. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Cummings?
Normally, I'm pretty hesitant on things like this that don't go out for bid, but because there is a third party who is, at his definition, a consultant and close enough, I think, to a fiduciary. I mean, we are paying him. He is not paid by the insurance company. I don't think he's getting any sort of compensation from the insurance company. Maybe he goes out to dinner or something like that. But I am comfortable with this. On the other hand, I'm not against more, you know, shine the light on it, but I don't think we're making a bad decision here because of that. I'm comfortable with this, but I could see marking the calendar for three months before the signage date for next year to visit this ahead of the contract signing so we have that 120-day window. But I look at flat to falling cost as provided by someone who is pretty darn near a fiduciary, and I'm pretty comfortable with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before I recognize Alderman Simoneon a second time, is there anyone else who wishes to speak a first time?
Just for clarification, I think what Alderman Simoneon is referring to is the broker fee. And this is renewing the liability, workers' comp, property, boiler and machinery, and so on and so forth. So I think what he's referring to is the fee that we pay the broker for these. And no, you're not.
No, I'm referring to the $453,000 we're paying for premiums and is that competitive. And my concern is, to address one of Alderman Cummings' comments, is that I understand, I feel more comfortable with the agent in a fiduciary responsibility versus commissions. But he made a statement last week that said a broker or a insurance agent will not provide to two separate brokers a bid on the same piece of business. So we don't know what another insurance agent through another broker might be able to deliver. And that's where part of my concern lies, is that we don't know what we don't know.
But I think that you have to, just so that everybody's clear, we're talking about carriers providing us, for example, liability insurance. And then we're talking about a broker who does a survey for Travelers or any of the other carriers for liability insurance. So the broker fee that we pay is one thing, and we have changed brokers over the years. But the carrier fee, the broker does do a survey to different liability companies, for example, and they do compare quotes from different carriers. Those carriers, once they provide that quote to, they don't care who our broker is, who our consultant is, they're not going to provide another quote for the city of Geneva. They're going to provide one quote.
Correct.
So I think that's what he was saying.
That plus-
But I just don't want, I wanted the council to understand, I think what you're, what I'm inferring from what you're saying is you're talking about the fees that we pay the broker, we haven't changed the broker.
No, I'm totally in favor of paying them a fee versus a commission.
And we don't pay a commission.
Right, and I'm totally in favor of that, and I like that arrangement. What I'm saying is that, like anything else out there, after eight years, there becomes a comfort level and a relationship level out there that says, you know, okay, so they are going to go and shop the market, but are they shopping if there's 100 carriers out there for this product? My guess is they're not shopping 100 carriers. They're shopping the carriers they believe are going to deliver possibly, but we don't know what we don't know. Are there other opportunities out there?
Well-
And also, I had questioned on the individual versus pooling, and he said, "No, the pooling is not the way to go," but yet he said, "I think they have 30 or 34 municipalities out there that do pooling." So the question is, why is it right for them and not right for us?
Because we have electric. And I know from doing this for several years, and Stephanie can speak to it because she does it now, there are very few carriers that will cover you with an electric distribution system that really narrows it down tremendously. And I'm not saying that the pools would reject us, but when you're talking about straight carriers out there, I know that there are a handful of them that will cover a municipality, which is different than an organization in the private sector. I mean, you've got police and fire, so those are higher risk to begin with. And then on top of that, you've got electric. And most municipalities don't have electric, so that does make a difference, so that does narrow the pool down. But that pool that we are, that our broker is aware of, that will cover municipalities with electric distribution are getting surveyed by our broker and comparing those costs.
So every carrier out there that has the potential of providing us with a quote or a service or whatever, that broker is getting bids from every one of those carriers that are available to service us. Is that what you're saying?
That's what we're paying for. That's our understanding.
Is that the answer? I mean, so the answer is yes? He or the Gallagher is checking every broker out there that-
That's what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay.
Yes. That's our understanding.
Is there, is there anything we're doing to make sure that they're doing it? What I'm saying is that it's gone eight years, half a million dollar contract, and there's this vicious cycle, in my opinion, that it's an automatic renewal, but you've got to give them 120 days advance notice to cancel the contract. And he makes a statement up there that we keep 92% of our business. Well, heck, it's hard not to keep 92% of your business with that kind of arrangement in a municipality arena.
But we have changed brokers.
But not in eight years.
We, no, perhaps not, but this is not the same broker that we've always had. We have looked into the market to see what commissions are charged, what fees are charged, and we've compared those. So, and basically, when you're talking about brokerage service, you're talking about service, whether or not, how claims are handled, how responsive they are for information, how they treat our citizens if they're involved in a claim. So you're talking primarily about service as with regard to their fees. And obviously, we're looking at the renewal rates. What kind of renewal rates are we getting based on the survey that they're, the market survey that they're doing, so?
I just don't think it's, I don't think it's unhealthy not to, over an eight-year period, to figure, to at least do some checks and balances here to say, you know, to validate that we are getting what we, what is the best service, the best brokers, the best, whatever, due diligence, vetting process out there.
We agree.
And all I'm saying is, it makes me feel uncomfortable that for this size, for that many years, it just seems like we should put something in place that allows us to bring it up for discussion in a timely manner that we can react to it.
I would agree, and now is not timely.
I know, but-
Not when it's up for renewal.
Until we got this packet, did I understand that we had, there's a 120-day, you know, clause that says you can't, you know, that was the first-
There's probably a lot of things that you're not aware of, and perhaps-
Oh, I guarantee there is.
Well, until they come up, it's hard to know. I mean, everybody can't know everything, not even us. I mean, we're learning every day about something new. So, you know, did I happen to remember that it was a 120-day notification six months ago or a year ago so that I could, you know, alert everybody to? No. You know, but that doesn't mean that it's wrong to talk about it, you know, to question it. I think that that's a good thing. It's just that when you wait until the last minute when a recommendation is brought forward, then it really doesn't do anyone any good, but for the next year going forward-
That's why I'm bringing it up. I'm not bringing it up to change it now.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that this is a, this is something we should look at in the future, changing this process. And I'm just asking, you know, and more curious what the rest of the council feels. I mean, if it's a moot point with the rest of the council, then, you know, that's fine, but I just, it just, I just think moving forward, it doesn't hurt to put it on a, put it on a calendar to say, you know-
Doesn't.
You know, and we may all vote for it every year, but at least it, it's, I think it gets us out of this cycle because we're in a cycle that, you know.
Well, I wouldn't call it a cycle. I think you're talking about having the same broker. But we can put it out, put an RFP out to compare brokerage firms to see what the fees are. I mean, we won't know about the service until we use them, so we can compare the fees that they would be charging us. We're happy to do that for next year.
Well, like I said, I just, I think it would just be good for everybody. It just pops up on the calendar 150 days out or whatever and says, you know, "We've got to make a decision 120 days. Are we all, are we going to go with the same, or do you want us to look at other fees," or whatever may be the case, and then just so we are, we don't fall into this scenario. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra, Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah. So two things out of that dialogue. One, you do agree that it's a good idea, as Alderman Cummings put it, shining a light on these things. We need to take a look. We need to verify that these guys are doing the job that we pay them to do and that they are doing that job as well as or better than anybody else out there can do. Correct?
Absolutely.
Good. I think the sticking point with what you're saying is you agree that it's not the time to not do it, but if all 10 of us voted against this, as you're doing, then we would be in a position where we have no choice but to do something. So I would rather look at it from Alderman Cummings' perspective and yours combined. I don't, I don't think, as I read this last week, I definitely don't see us getting a bad deal. It's going down 1.3% in an industry where an average increase is 4.1%. Could we do better? Perhaps, but perhaps not. I don't know. I trust staff to kind of have their finger on that pulse. So I'm good with this going forward, but as is the case with anything, I'm also good with you guys telling us why this is the best we're going to do. Okay, thanks.
Alderman Kilburg?
I think Mary made an interesting point as it relates to claims. Does our broker really intercede? In other words, if we have a disputed claim, does he, does he interject himself as essentially an agent on our behalf at times?
There can be those situations, particularly if a claim is appealed.
Okay.
We've also had instances where the carrier was not being responsive and the broker has intervened on our behalf.
Okay, good, well-
So, and just if you'll notice-
So that's the service piece that you're referring to there, that as we have insurance agents that if we have an issue with a-
Correct.
-an auto claim or something where they intercede and lobby on our behalf. The broker really lobbies on our behalf on matters. Have we had a pretty good history with the carriers that he's brought forward to us?
Yes, actually, if you'll recall, we are switching carriers for our liability package this year, back to a carrier we had three years ago or two years ago. That was a carrier we first got in 2008. We were with Travelers. We then went with Trident. We were with Trident for a while, then rates came back better to go with Argonaut or Lloyds of London. We switched to them. This year, Lloyds of London wanted to increase our rates. We went back to Trident. Trident actually gave us a decrease over what our renewal premium was last year for the same coverage and terms. Trident is no longer in the business of writing electric uti, no, sorry. Travelers is no longer in the business of writing electric utilities. They contact us every year to quote our business, and then they remember, "Oops, you have an electric utility," and they say, "Just kidding." But if you look on page 162 of the packet, it shows all the various companies that the broker went to and asked for a quote, and there are many that declined and many that, you know, some quotes, some declined, some take themselves out of the game.
No, I guess, you know, I think Alderman Simoneon raises a good point, but you can be penny-wise and dollar foolish. And the thing is, if you do have a relationship with someone that's representing you well, providing services, and brings value to the equation, I think there's something to be said about a relationship and trying to perpetuate that relationship if it's mutually beneficial.
Alderman Singer, then Alderman Merdecky?
Thank you, Mayor. I see the concern. I sort of broached when the gentleman was here a week or two ago regarding this 120-day period in which my feelings are such that is whomever it is that we select, is he going to perform his fiduciary responsibilities to see to it that he's giving to the city of Geneva the best service that he could provide? And then again, how do we know that really he is performing that function in that manner? You had suggested something about a request for a proposal, that possible, there's a possibility we can move in that direction. I certainly would like to see that done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Merdecky?
Thank you. Well, I agree, it's always good to probably, at some time, to look for another broker and plenty of time next year maybe to see if there's another one out there. I will speak to this one and Arthur Gallagher. I was in commercial claims for about 35 years, so I understand what these brokers do, and I, besides, there's a lot more to do with it than just price, too, for having them go around and assemble every single carrier. I mean, there are carriers, and there are carriers, and what those carriers return in bids, with municipalities in particular, it takes a certain expertise to wade through that, to see what, you know, the cheapest one is not necessarily always the best one for you. And these carriers will play, I won't say games, but they'll move coverages around a little bit to make it look better, to make it look worse, and that's, you know, you rely upon the broker to do that. So, you know, looking at the list of people and the companies that he brokers with, you know, he goes to some of the major ones, the reputable ones, and I also think that, you know, the experience that that particular risk management firm has is well-known in the industry. So I think we're getting, we're fine, but I also acknowledge the fact that at a certain point, you know, it makes sense to see if there's another broker that wants to compete for the business as well. But, you know, it's not just a matter of surveying every single company out there and then getting the cheapest ones. It does take a level of expertise, which you don't know about their expertise until you have experience with them, too. It may be after the fact, when you find out that a broker got you a cut-rate deal somewhere, and then when, you know, when you really need them to pay, you don't necessarily see that. I think, I think what's, as far as our insurance program goes, and I know Alderman Kilburg kind of hit this a little bit last week, and I kind of drove to it, it's our loss history that drives more of what we can do, I think, to control our premiums rather than shopping the market as best as possible. And workers' compensation is probably the biggest opportunity that any large organization, and I think particularly a municipality, has with attempting to control or limit their exposure with things. So, you know, I would spend just as much time encouraging, you know, solid loss control programs and safety programs, which I know that we have, but concentrating on that, I think, will give you as good a bang for your buck as perhaps just shopping brokers, though it's not a bad idea to do. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Item 11A, Alderman Simoneon?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a problem supporting this as long as we can get an agreement that next year we at least are, you know, it's on an agenda, it's an agenda item prior to that 120 days just to revisit it. So if I can get that commitment from staff, okay. Thank you.
Necessary for that to be put in the motion?
No.
No.
I believe that falls under the Director of Administrative Services' job, which-
It does.
-this council chose to eliminate it effective June 13th, so we'll see how that works.
I did put it on my calendar. Then I know it's coming up.
You guys can lead the effort.
You and your technology.
Roll call votes in order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll. Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoneon?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Motion passes. 10 affirmative votes, no names. We're going to jump down to item 13, new business. Anyone in the audience, any new business tonight? From the dais, Alderman Simoneon?
Thank you, Mayor. I sent some emails out today because I'm still struggling with this, with this budget and how this budget gets balanced and where these funds are, where these funds are. I mean, I just, I'm still struggling with the fact that we were delivered a balanced budget, and from that balanced budget, we removed the places for eating tax of $300,000. And then we removed approximately $470,000 in expenses for medical or group insurance. And then we removed approximately $138,000 in the assistant city administrator position. So, and I'm not talking about fund, individual funds, I'm talking about the overall budget. At the end of the day, there's a bottom line. There's total revenues, total expenses. How it breaks out by funds, it's, you know, to me, it doesn't matter because at the end of the day, you're looking at a balanced budget, not a balanced fund. So with that scenario, you have 600, approximately $600,000 in expenses that have been removed and $300,000 in revenue, so you have a surplus of around $300,000. And then last week, we added towing fees, increased parking tickets for about, around $100,000 of additional revenue, and then decreased legal expenses by another $20,000. So there's $120,000 there on top of the 300 that, from the other cuts, both, or additions and cuts in revenues, cuts in expenses. So that leaves us with around $420,000 in my calculations in the overall budget. That's a surplus. Now, that can be placed into reserves, it can be placed into any of the funds, et cetera. My question is, where is it? That's my concern. I don't know where, I don't know where it went, and that's what I'm curious about, so.
First and foremost, no one should make the mistake of assuming that we will generate the monies we assume we'll generate based on the towing fees and/or the parking fees because those are not in ordinance yet. This council still has to vote in those ordinances. Those are placeholders in the budget.
Right.
But should this council decide not to enact the parking fine increases, that's always a possible scenario, so.
Yeah, I'm just going-
But shouldn't be counted as revenue yet.
I'm just going under the, well, we've got to put it as a placeholder, like you said, because we've got to submit to the state a balanced budget. So let's just assume those placeholders are correct. Of course, if they're not passed, whatever, it'll be adjusted accordingly and we'll have to, you know, do whatever. But I'm still trying to wrestle with where that is and how that, how that works. I mean, I've been dealing with budgets for a long time, and I just can't figure out in the big picture, now the big picture, the overall budget, the balanced budget.
If I could just reiterate what I said to you today, could you just come in and sit down with us and look at the numbers? Because the numbers that you've suggested, I'm not sure where you're getting those. And the reason that I'm questioning some of those is because we had deducted, for example, the insurance overage, over last year's amount. We had deducted, the Director of Administrative Services Department had assistant city administrator position, brought that back. And then I think that you're deducting those a second time. But again, trying to crunch numbers on the fly, I just think that if you would come and sit down and we could walk through it to verify that the numbers that you're using, the numbers that we're using, that we're understanding each other, and I think that's all it is, is we're not understanding each other-
All right.
-and we're not going to at a meeting like this trying to crunch the numbers on the fly.
Here's what I will do. I will come visit with you, but I want, when I come and visit, I want the budget that was, and I think this is how I, it'll clarify it for me, the budget that was delivered to us before any changes were made, the balanced budget that was delivered to us with the health insurance as proposed, with the ACA position as proposed, with the places for eating tax as proposed.
March 14th.
Yeah, that budget. And then the actions by the council, which are all those ones I just mentioned, and then the final- and then the final budget with those actions and where those dollars are.
I think that you'll understand it better if we sit down and look at the numbers and verify that the numbers that you're using in your questions are actually correct. Because I, again, I think there's a couple of instances where you're using those same numbers twice.
Okay, well, if I, if I am, then I will, okay, I'll sit down.
And I think, because what happened at the, I don't remember if it was the March 14th or March 28th, you made the motion to do the health and dental insurance and the Assistant City Administrator. The budget was then revised for the following meeting. So the budget was revised as a balanced budget, and those extra dollars were either removed from reappraisal or put into fund balance of the various funds. So that, that surplus was gone. Then you removed the $300,000, so now you had that to deal with. So I think what you said, if you sit down and you see the first budget, the second budget, the third budget, you'll see where those dollars went.
Okay, I'm willing to sit and try and get some education. And I could be wrong. And I'll chalk it up to government budgeting versus private sector budgeting.
It's not our rules.
It's, yes, sound budgeting, good fund balance, fund account.
Thank you.
Anyone else on their new business? Mr. Decker.
I don't see Mr. Decker here. Do you think it would be appropriate to give the general public some idea regarding Marquette and the direction that things will be moving? Because I think a lot of people, probably like myself, have been asked a lot of questions. I know there's been a lot of clarification. Would you care to just perhaps, for the viewing public, let them know what the process will be and where we're at with that?
Certainly. If no one objects, I can read Mr. Decker's email to us, which will also be included in this week's e-newsletter blast on Friday. This email is from David Decker, our Director of Community Development. It's addressed to the Alderman, myself, and all the department heads. It reads, "Dear all, I know many of you attended the Plan Commission meeting last Thursday or have otherwise heard that some of Marquette's requests voted on and others were withdrawn. I just wanted to follow up with a summary email. There were nine separate requests listed below with a summary of the action taken. The Plan Commission voted on the first four before the applicant decided to withdraw the remaining five. The first four items will be forwarded to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the consideration, for their consideration on May 9th. That meeting will be held here at City Hall. They include amendments to the downtown master plan and amendments to the zoning ordinance. After discussing it with myself and others, the May 9th meeting again will be here at City Hall, as will the May 16th meeting, which is a regularly scheduled council meeting. The specific development proposal for a 202-unit, three-to-five-story apartment building has been withdrawn. Any specific development proposal will require a new application, notice, public hearing, et cetera. I have received some questions regarding when Marquette can reapply, and I think perhaps all of us may have heard this as well, I certainly have. There is nothing in our zoning ordinance that would require them to wait to reapply whether formal action was taken or not. The nine standards, an amendment to the city's adopted downtown station area master plan to change the future land use designation of a portion of the property from public, semi-public, to downtown commercial mixed use, was approved and recommended for approval by the Plan Commission."
Recommended for-
Recommended for approval. We would ultimately approve it. Standard number two, an amendment to the city's adopted downtown station area master plan to change the future land use designation of a portion of the property from industrial office to downtown commercial mixed use, the Plan Commission recommended for approval. Standard three, text amendments to Chapter Six, Office and Commercial Districts, Article HB6, Planned Unit Development District of Title 11 of the Geneva City Code, specifically Section 11-6-6H, Description and Intent, and Section 11-6H-3, Lot and Area Requirements, the Plan Commission recommended denial. Standard four, text amendments to Chapter Nine, Plan Unit Developments of Title 11 of the Geneva City Code, to Section 11-9-2, Purpose and Objectives, and Section 11-9-9, Bulk Incentives and Open Space, the Plan Commission recommended approval of amendments to Section 11-9-2 and recommended denial of amendments to Section 11-9-9. So that was a split recommendation there. Standard five, a zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of the property from B2 Business District to B6 Planned Unit Development was withdrawn. There was no vote taken. A zoning map amendment to rezone the portion of the property from I2, Industrial 2, General Industrial District, to B6 Planned Unit Development, there was no vote as the petition was withdrawn. Standard seven, a zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of the property from R6, Two and Three Family Residential District, to B6 Planned Unit Development Business District, was also withdrawn. No vote taken. Standard eight, preliminary planned unit development plan approval under B6 Business District for the entire property, including a 202-unit apartment building, a 337-space parking structure, 106 surface parking spaces, and 5,940 square feet of retail building, and the extension of Seventh Street North from West State Street to Peyton Street. No action taken as the petition was withdrawn. Standard nine, final planned unit development plan approval under the B6 Business District for a portion of the property, including a 202-unit apartment building, 337 parking structure, space parking structure, 106 surface parking spaces, and the extension of Seventh Street North from West State Street to Peyton Street. Also, no action taken as the petition was withdrawn. An update to the project webpage on the city of Geneva's website, www.geneva-il.us, will be available by the end of the day, that's today, so it should be available this evening. If anyone has any questions, by all means, they're free to contact Mr. David Decker. His phone number here at City Hall is 232-0814. So, all that said, on May the 9th, the Committee of the Whole will consider those elements that were advanced to the committee by the Plan Commission, whether they be recommended for approval or recommended for denial. Anything else? Anyone from the audience, any new business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session on collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. Alderman Simoni makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Marx makes the second. Roll call votes in order.
Mary Sino.
Hi.
Tom Simoni.
Hi.
Ron Singer.
Hi.
Mike Bruno.
Hi.
Tara Burkhardt.
Hi.
Don Cummings.
Hi.
Dean Kilberg.
Hi.
Craig Milladra.
Richard Marx.
Hi.
Jim Decker.
Hi.
There's no action being taken this evening, folks. We should return in hopefully just a few minutes. The microphones are off.